Good evening, welcome to the October 16, 2024 Decennial Committee Meeting. We're going to have this committee meeting, it should be about 10 minutes before we start the regular board meeting. I'd like to call the order. Kelly, can you call the roll?
Trustee Bradrick.
Present.
Trustee Budzinski.
Present.
Trustee Harris.
Present.
Trustee Garcia-Guian. Trustee Lee.
Present.
Trustee Morales.
Present.
Trustee Stamborski.
Present.
Trustee Queenie.
Present.
Ben Storitz.
Present.
Donny Chestnut.
Present.
Dr. Amy Gray.
Present.
Hi there. Present. Chairman, there's a call.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item D is for public comments. If you have any public comments related to the Decennial Committee Meeting, we'll have another public comment session during the regular board meeting. Do we have any decennial comments? None?
None at that at all.
Thank you. Item E, approval of the minutes, May 22, 2024. You need a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
And a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian.
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick.
Yes.
Trustee Budzinski.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Stamborski.
Yes.
Trustee Queenie.
Yes.
Mr. Storitz.
Yes.
Ms. Chestnut.
Yes.
Dr. Gray.
Yes.
Motion Harris.
Item F, motion to accept the final report of the committee.
So moved.
Second. And a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Queenie.
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick.
Yes.
Trustee Budzinski.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Stamborski.
Yes.
Trustee Queenie.
Yes.
Mr. Storitz.
Yes.
Ms. Chestnut.
Yes.
Dr. Gray.
Yes.
Motion Harris.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to turn the mic over to Dr. Namoo.
Chairman, thank you. I just want to take the opportunity to thank the Decennial Committee for your tremendous efforts. Dr. Gray might have some additional thoughts, but thank you for taking time out of your day to spend with us on all the efforts you put forth to support the college and what we do. So, thank you.
Yes, I echo the same sentiments and want to give a special thank you to Ben Storitz and Donny Chestnut for being our community members on the committee, as well as Erin Farmer for doing a lot of the collection and helping analyze the data for 12 by 12 by 12, and Maria Anna Raefek and Ash Kalinder, who worked a lot on the sustainability section report.
Thank you. At this point, item G, Chair is calling for a motion in a second to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick.
Yes.
Trustee Budzinski.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Stamborski.
Yes.
Trustee Queenie.
Yes.
Mr. Storitz.
Yes.
Ms. Chestnut. Dr. Gray.
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call the order, the Wednesday, October 16, regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. So moved.
Second.
Karen, can you call the roll? We don't need Kelly. And I apologize, Kelly called the roll.
Trustee Bradrick.
Yes. Present.
Trustee Garcia-Guian.
Present.
Trustee Harris.
Present.
Trustee Lee.
Present.
Trustee Morales.
Here.
Trustee Stamborski.
Present.
Trustee Queenie.
Present.
Trustee Budzinski.
Present. I'd like to welcome everyone. At this time, item 1.1.3, I'm going to ask for us to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item 1.2, Communications. Kelly Roder tonelli.
Good evening, JJC trustees and campus community. As you know, each month, we like to highlight a community partnership, and I can't think of a better one than the individual that we have invited here this evening. So, as the Board prepares to approve the proclamation of November as Native American Heritage Month, I want to take a moment to share how one 45-minute phone call in September 2022 unequivocally influenced how the college educates and celebrates the vital role Native Americans have played and continue to play in our district. This phone call was in mid-September, and it was between Ted Trujillo, a resident of Morris, and Passamaquoddy tribal member, and me. Mr. Trujillo asked me what the college did to acknowledge the impact of Native Americans in the community. From what he could tell, it just didn't feel like enough. One thing you learn when you meet Ted, and you will meet him in a moment, is that his passion for his ancestry and his culture is at the core of who he is. He is kind, he is thoughtful, and he is an advocate, a born advocate. After learning about Ted's incredible personal history and interest in supporting additional education about Native American heritage, I leaned into my colleague, Dr. Esportina Irvin, who quickly mobilized the DEI team to take ideas from concepts to programs. Following these discussions in 2022, the DEI department was joined in its efforts by three more departments, the Center of Multicultural Access and Success, Human Resources, and Corporate and Community Services, in creating five additional programs throughout the month of November that the college addressed in terms of issues faced by Native American tribes, in addition to a land acknowledgement event. So, I can't think, as I said at the start, I can't think of a better moment than this evening to bring Ted to the podium to share his thoughts on our partnership.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want, and I'm not going to take too much of your time here, but I wanted to let you guys know that you're being noticed. You're being noticed by the Native American community, you're being noticed by schools. And to be honest with you, you guys get brought up a lot at a lot of the bigger name colleges I spent a lot of time working with, and they're impressed. Takes a lot to impress me, but you guys have done it. Dr. Irvin, Kelly, Multicultural Center, the DEI program. There's nothing to say but positives. The ball was put down in front of them, they grabbed it, and they're running with it. And everybody I talked to that's involved is, they're going above and beyond. They're doing their own research. They want to have something to talk to me about. When I come in, they want my opinions after they've already spent time discussing things. I cannot thank you all enough for what you guys have done and what I know you're going to continue doing. Thank you, and we do appreciate you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
1.3.1, Approval of November as Native American Heritage Month Proclamation. Robert Morse.
Chairman Budzinski, trustees of the Board, members of the JJC community, it is my pleasure this evening to introduce you all to Selena Caldera. Selena is currently an undecided first-year student here at JJC. She's a member of our student government, Active Minds, and the Honors Program, and Selena loves to read and write, so I would like us to all welcome Selena.
Whereas people of Native American ancestry have played a major part in the history of the United States, or as it is the goal of Joliet Junior College, to provide students with a comprehensive curricular and co-curricular educational experience, with consideration given to all socially identifiable groups within American history and culture. Whereas people of Native American ancestry have played and continue to play a vital role in the economic, cultural, social, political, and geographic development of the United States. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Board of Trustees of Illinois Community College, District Number 525, Joliet Junior College, the counties of Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, Kinky Key, Livingston, and Cook. State of Illinois hereby recognizes and designates the month of November as Native American Heritage Month, and Illinois Community College District Number 525 adopted this 16th day of October 2024. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, the Chair calls for a motion to accept the proclamation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion Harris.
Thank you. Item 1.4, Public Comments. Kelly, do we have any public comments tonight?
We do, Chairman. We have seven, actually. Before I call the first commenter to the podium, I'd like to read the rules. Comments should be limited to three minutes per speaker and 12 minutes per topic if there is more than one speaker. Sean Miller, who could like to throw?
Hello, Board of Trustees.
Hello.
So, I would just like to talk about, at first, my experiences with having come to JJC and how proud it made me because I had spent five years of just in the workforce, not really doing anything to improve myself. And when I came here, I felt a sense of pride in myself and in this institution for giving people like me who, you know, kind of missed the boat when they initially left high school a chance to come back and get their education. That being said, I, after having observed in person and the, through the YouTube videos of these board meetings, come to find a great deal of, I suppose, a good word would be embarrassment at the way that I've seen the Board comport itself. The, there is obvious dysfunction, and it lessens my confidence in this institution. It lessens my pride in attending, and it makes me worry about how this institution is being run. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Mark Jones. He would like to speak regarding the temperature and climate of the Board.
Hello, good evening. It is truly an honor, and I want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak here today as a part of your public comments section of the Board. My name is Mark, and I am currently a freshman here at JJC. When I encountered our student trustee at the Main Street event here at JJC, they talked to me about the work they were doing on campus. Most recently, they were trying to get students to take a survey if they were interested in a bachelor's degree at JJC. We began to talk about the many different things, including what I was up to and studying here at JJC. I'm a student who is always knowledgeable on the things that are happening around me. In high school, I showed up to many board meetings, even gathered a committee of students to advise the Board on the culture and climate of my high school. During my time here at JJC, I thought it would be beneficial for me to do the same and learn about the Board of Trustees and how they operate. It was then when I watched the September 11th Board of Trustees meeting, when the Title Nine policy was on the agenda. I heard you all provide your perspective on the policy. When the student trustee advised the Board of their perspective on the policy, stating that it would increase protections for students here at JJC, another trustee cut him off and spoke to them with a very unsettling tone. When I heard this, I immediately spoke to the student trustee the following day and made sure that they knew others had their back. When hearing comments made towards a student trustee, to me, I interpret that as you're speaking to the whole body of students. When you're demeaning a student trustee, you are demeaning all of the students that attend this very institution. And I think it's important to sort of have respect to one another, not just the student trustee, but for you all. And I think that's important to keep the college, or keep JJC great. This institution is wonderful, and we provide so many different services and opportunities for everyone. And I think the dysfunction of this Board is going to lead JJC down a very bad path in the future. And voting the opposite of others, or other Board members, because they voted a certain way, I think is the opposite way we should be using the office that your constituents allowed you to be in. People are watching what's going on and are engaged, students are knowledgeable, and are in touch with what's happening. Let's turn the page and continue to make JJC a thriving institution where we can all come to work, learn, collaborate, and celebrate together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Andrew Martinez. He would like to speak regarding previously electing new members and appointing trustee Stamborski.
Hello, Board of Trustees.
Hello.
I've come to make public comments on the activity which I find worrying that the Board has been displaying fairly recently. After watching the failure to elect any new Board member to complete the former trustee's term during the September 25th special board meeting, I've become worried about the Board's dividedness. While trustee Stamborski was thankfully appointed on the October 7th meeting, congratulations, by the way, there was still dividedness being displayed, which I was pretty disappointed about. I've spent the last couple weeks organizing students together in order to spread the word of this behavior, and have gotten a few to even attend this board meeting in order to describe our overall message. The overall message being this: The dysfunction during board meetings should not be this bad, and we believe that reasonable discussion can and should be had, and should be happening. I personally hope, as trustee Stamborski settles into his new role, every Board member considers reflecting on themselves and potentially turning down the temperature during board meetings. Because of the way that these meetings go and the decisions being made, it's hard for me to be certain that the Board has had an interest in students like me and others who, for example, attended this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next public commenter is Maureen Broderick, and she would like to speak on the President's contract.
You can leave me at the end. At the end. There's others to speak. Go ahead.
You're not a member of the public, you're a member of the Board, and there's a trustee comments section on the agenda.
We can't speak as citizens?
Never see you before.
You were elected to have a voice here.
Our next commenter is Jen Howard, and she would like to speak in support of the President's
Good evening, and thank you, trustees, for giving me this opportunity today. My name is Jen Howard, and I've been deeply connected to the Joliet Junior College, beginning in the early 80s when I completed my associate's degree, and have lived in the district for over 50 years. I'm a proud alum, and I've stayed connected through my over 11 years serving on the JJC Foundation Board, two of which I was honored to serve as president. I have been a business owner in the district, and for over 10 years, provided donations, as well as establishing a scholarship in mine in my husband's name. I am fortunate to have had many partnerships with the various departments at JJC as president and CEO of the Joliet Region Chamber of Commerce and Industry. JJC has been, but especially now, a unique resource to the large district it serves. There are innovative programs that continue to break new ground with the transformative partnerships that open doors for students and the community. To me, it is clear that JJC is not just keeping pace, it is leading the way. I'm proud to be a part of this first, the first college, community college in the country. This progress is a result of visionary leadership that sees beyond the challenges of today and imagines the possibilities of tomorrow. With the leadership of Dr. Namoo, we have embraced a future-focused mindset, committed to growth and relevance to higher education. His dedication to fostering student success and pushing the boundaries of what a community college can achieve has positioned JJC as a leader, not just locally, but on a national stage, especially through the 12 by 12 by 12 program. We are so lucky to have you in the community. The ease with which you integrated into the community and became a trusted leader was flawless. It is hard to believe that in less than three years, you have gained the respect of this community, which for some, it takes decades to earn that reputation. With that in mind, I want to say to the trustees, this community cares, this community is aware. Recent headlines are troubling. Please commit to the oaths of your office, of the office you took, to be honest and nonpartisan stewards of this college. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next public commenter is Terry Darcy, and he would like to speak in support of Dr. Namoo.
Good evening, members of the Board of Trustees.
Good evening.
President Quine Muo, number 10, thank you. He and I have a running joke, he's number 10, I'm number 44. I stand before you not only as mayor, but also as a local business owner and committed member of this community. Our relationship with Joliet Junior College has been a longstanding and vital partnership, one that has benefited both the college and the city of Joliet. In any partnership, whether personal or professional, fortunes of one party inevitably influence the other. This is particularly true for our relationship with Joliet Junior College, where the decisions made here resonate throughout our community. That's why I feel is essential to emphasize the importance of integrity and unity in our leadership. As mayor, I strive to protect the reputation of Joliet, and every decision we make is guided by a commitment to the community we serve. While we may have our differences, I believe in the power of constructive dialogue. Words matter, and our actions must reflect our dedication for the greater good. It deeply concerns me to see negative headlines overshadow the positive impact Joliet Junior College has on our community. I urge you all to set aside your differences and prioritize what truly matters, the well-being of our students, and integrity of this institution. With three campuses in Joliet, Joliet Junior College is a cornerstone of our community, and it deserves our unwavering support. Recently, I attended the State of the College address and left inspired by the strides Dr. Quine and his team have made under his leadership. His vision and dedication to this institution are evident, and I stand firmly behind him. I call upon each of you to seek common ground and work together for the benefits of the students and the community. Let us show our shared goals far outweigh our differences. By coming together, we can set a powerful example for our youth and those who entrusted us to these roles. Thank you for your time. I sincerely hope you'll continue to support Dr. Quine, his leadership at Joliet Junior College, and for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have trustee, student trustee, Queenie, who will be...
I'm reading on behalf of a JJC student, Ellie Skibby, who has a public comment for the Board tonight. Dear Board of Trustees, my name is Ellie Skibby. I started attending Joliet Junior College this fall. In that time, I have come to find this college to be a safe and accepting place. My teachers have been nothing but nice, but I have never had to interact with the administration besides the first couple of days of school. To hear that the school is facing a lawsuit for something so trivial was extremely jarring. So far, I've only known this school as a functional, and as functional, and while that might just be because I have been in this institution for a short time, hearing that this has happened before, albeit for different reasons, is extremely disparaging. I am not asking you to come to any conclusions because I have only surface-level knowledge of what is going on, but if you don't find a way of mitigation, people will start seeing this Board as dysfunctional because of the fighting amongst each other, which will only leave people dissatisfied going to school, that so far, I have felt nothing but excitement to attend. In so conclusion, I have started my education by really enjoying this institution. If the Board keeps showing a lack of competence in mediation, me and everyone else who pays money for this school for a quality education will start seeing the cracks in the school and look for alternative schools that will show it will not devolve into infighting at every turn. Sincerely, Ellie Skibby.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have two more?
Okay.
I'd like to call the names. Maureen Broderick. I'm going to ask. Michelle Lee.
Again, the purpose of public comments, for the Board, we do not have the opportunity to speak during the meeting, to offer their thoughts on anything that might be on the agenda or about the institution. You have the opportunity to talk during debate on anything that's on the agenda, and you have the opportunity to talk during trustee comments. I don't think it's proper for a trustee to be offering public comments.
That is your opinion? I would personally, who was elected by this Board, would feel silenced if I, as a constituent as well, would not, who is also able to vote, was not able to make a public comment. I understand that there are a lot of people that came today to show support for President Namoo. However, I think it would be an injustice to my community if you were not aware of those who are pulling their support from the college due to President Namoo. JJ, this is an email that all trustees received. Dear JJC Board of Trustees and Dr. Namoo, we would like to thank you for prioritizing the college's Grundy Expansion Project. The time, research, and thought invested in exploring a future Grundy County campus has unified leaders around an exciting vision. The team involved and the data shared has generated excitement, not only among the Grundy County Expansion Committee, but the entire community. As JJC continues to examine its future in Morris regarding the Grundy County Expansion Project, the local members of the community feel it is taking a direction we cannot support. The location at the Route 6 and Ashton Road is under JJC's serious consideration. This site was not on or near the committee's list of recommendations, recommended locations, and poses limitations that will surely impact the success of the facility. These concerns have been expressed by members of our group individually and as a committee. Despite this, the college is continuing its due diligence at this location. While not entirely, the presented programming seems mostly unresponsive to local workforce needs and duplicative of what JJC already offers. We understand there is more to consider beyond the wants and needs of major employers and stakeholders in Grundy County. However, the training program suggested incorporate little to none of the local data or the committee's express needs for the area. These concerns... These concerns have also been shared. A robust and relevant JJC campus in Morris continues to be the goal for all involved in the Expansion Committee. However, we cannot support the most recent plan for programs or proposed locations should the college move forward on this path. We ask you to remove our names from the list of partners for the Grundy County Expansion Project. Signed sincerely, the local members of the Grundy County Expansion Committee, Chris Brown, Mayor of City of Morris, Lance Copes, Grundy Area Vocational Center, Thomas Dome, Morris Hospital and Healthcare Centers, Sharon Johnson, Constellation, Mary Kuzak, Grundy County, Nancy Norton, Grundy Economic Development Council, Christine Van Yarpin, Grundy County Chamber of Commerce and Industry, and Julie Wilkinson, City of Morris. One of the most important qualities of good leader is the ability to listen and make decisions that are in the best interest of everyone involved. JJC recently announced its Westward Expansion in partnership with Morris and Grundy County. The City of Morris and Grundy County were initially excited to put into action a plan that started with former President Dr. Judy Mitchell. She had built all the relationships and laid the groundwork with the help of a grant from Senator Sue Resin for the City of Morris to be the expansion of the hangar.
At this time, the public comment time is expired.
A whole city and a whole county has pulled out support. I understand that there may be some division on the board, but there is good reason for it.
Just the time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
There are no other public comments.
Item 1.9.1, approval of minutes for the regular meeting held on September 11, 2024.
So moved.
Item 1.5, moment of silence. Dr. Namua.
Chairman and trustees, I'm asking the college community to join me in a moment of silence for the following individuals. Shaylee Pearl Aguilar, daughter of Juan Aguilar, Assistant Professor in our Technical Department; Marguerite Greenfield, mother of Susan Badis, our nursing professor; Alfred Ordialis, brother to Yolanda Zenowick, an academic credential specialist; Sharon Klobrdance, mother-in-law of Jennifer Klobrdance, our Director of Admissions and Recruitment; Declan Faze, one of our culinary arts students. And chairman, I'd like to hand it to trustee Queenie, they've got something to add to this list as well.
Yes, I'd just like to add a moment of silence for the victims of the two hurricanes that recently hit North Carolina and Florida and Tennessee, Hurricanes Milton and Hurricanes Helene. The victims of the Hurricanes Milton and Helene.
Thank you, Dr. Namua and trustee Queenie. Moving on to item 1.6.1, the ERP restart report. Dr. Yolanda Farmer.
Chairman, Dr. Farmer's giving me a look, which means Dr. Namua will tee it up. Dr. Farmer's going to give a lot of background here, and this board has been through it with us, but we've reached a critical juncture, and Dr. Farmer comes forward before the board today to really acknowledge our progress and to chart a path forward, and really to make a case to the board for that path forward. So there are three words that I use in my State of the College: stabilization, optimization, and modernization, and I did that for a reason, understanding that we have stabilized our ERP, we're working to optimize, and we will soon be working to modernize. So with that, Dr. Farmer, floor's yours.
All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Namua, and good evening, Chairman Bazinsky, trustees of the board and the JJC community. A special acknowledgement to our students for being here this evening. So once again, I have the privilege of providing the Board of Trustees an update regarding one of the most important projects that we have at this college, our ERP restart. But before I start this presentation today, I want to do something a little bit different. I really want to talk about why this investment is important. It's just not about technology, I think we all know that, but really, it is about investing in our students. Dr. Namua made a very key indication that we're talking about modernization, optimization. So I'm going to talk a little bit about that today, but most importantly, why we are moving forward with this project is to support our students. So Board of Trustees, I want to remind you that you have been excellent ambassadors with our ERP restart. Trustee Broderick, I can recall when we talked about moving forward with the IVV process, you advocated for that, so I want to say thank you for that. Vice Chairman Morales, I remember when we talked about implementing project managers, you said, okay, that's great, but let's think about two project managers, and the list goes on and on. So in March, I want to highlight that, we stressed that we needed some technical support, individuals to help support us move forward with data cleanup. The entire board supported that, and so once again, I want to thank you for your board action. But I truly believe the reason why you continue to support this major project is that we continue to be transparent with you. Real, honest communication, and then sometimes courageous conversations regarding the state of this project. We continue to honor the voices of those individuals who are closest to the project. We leverage the talent of the employees that we have here, but most importantly, we know that we can face these challenges, because in ERP, you know, there's some challenges, but we have confidence because a lot of the employees have confidence in your ability, including the cabinet's ability to move this project forward. So as a reminder, trustees of the board, we've done a really good job of building the infrastructure for the ERP restart. Every single aspect that's on this list today, from establishing our governance structure, from the technical support, from implementing ALFME, from data cleanup, was all about building the infrastructure for the college to move forward with our ERP. Now, we've made significant progress, I'm going to pause. Significant progress, but we have a lot more to do, right, Tim? This is when I need affirmation. Thank you. So I want to take a moment just to look at the audience, because we have a lot of our leaders here today who've been intimately involved in the ERP restart, and I'm looking in the camera, where's the camera? I want to say thank you to the JJC community for their resilience, for staying committed to the process, being very creative sometimes, and grit, but most importantly, thank you for staying focused on this project, and that's really to streamline the process to better support our students. So Dr. Namua already mentioned two important words. This is where I want you to repeat this with me, EOM. Repeat that word. EOM.
EOM.
Thank you. ERP optimization and modernization. We have Workday, we've already been working on optimizing every single aspect of Workday. So as we move to the cloud with colleague SAS, that's important to us, we have to optimize. But most importantly, we're trying to move forward to modernize the technology that we have at Joliet Junior College. So once again, I want to stress to you, for almost fourteen months, we've been on this path of building the infrastructure. That started in April, but now we're moving into a critical phase of the process in the project, and that is our ERP optimization and also ERP modernization. And again, it's an opportunity for us to enhance the process, streamline the process, and elevate it, but most importantly, to modernize our technology so we are innovative, that we transform every single aspect of our technology, but most importantly, for it to be future-proof. Ten years from now, I don't want to stand in front of you to say we need another ERP. So we're planning, and we're working hard to make sure this is a future-proof process. So, but before we go live with anything, in terms of optimization and modernization, there are certain components that we need moving forward. So trustee of the board, I want to highlight real important, eight important aspects that we will continue to come to you for additional funding and support. I think most of us talked about this before, about an architect review, I believe some of the board members talked about this. When you build your house and you want to move forward with an extension, you want to make sure that you have a clear foundation, that you have clear water, et cetera, right? It's the same way. Before we move forward with any additional purchases, we want to do an architect review just to make sure that we are moving forward with correct integration, correct software, correct data. You've heard me time after time talk about the CRM. I'm looking at the staff members from the student development area. They continue to support and advocate for a CRM, just to remind the board that's the customer relationship management software. It's an opportunity to scale up, prospecting, enrollment, but it's across the entire college. It's a great system. Human capital, thank you, board, for continuing to support us in terms of backfield positions, but we also have to make sure we continue to service our students. So we will continue to request additional staffing for technical support. Integration, just want to stress to everyone, we have about sixty third-party integrations, and that's why it's so important for us to do an architect review. Integration connects, it creates a seamless process with Workday and colleague, but you never know, there's an opportunity that we may not have sixty integrations. So we're going to continue to do some work in that area. Data warehousing, again, how long have we been established at Joliet Junior College? Since 1901? So we have a lot of data, a lot of historical data, so we want to make sure that we continue to store data that's related to HR, to finance, et cetera. And last but not least, I just want to highlight two important other aspects, training and development. Online demand is nice, right? But we want to bring in more individuals that can train our staff so we could become more and more confident in Workday and also in colleague SAS. Post-live support, and most importantly, contingency. You all know, as we move forward with the project, we always will build in a contingency plan. So trustee of the boards, I just want to highlight that I've been working very closely, I'm looking at Kissel, I've charged Kissel and her team to really come up with a comprehensive budget. A comprehensive budget that will address all the critical areas, and also a contingency plan. And that budget will be presented to the steering committee, you know, we have that governance structure, and then we'll come back to the board for advocacy and support. So at this time, I want to thank once again the board for your ongoing support. I want to thank the JJC community for remaining resilient and moving this project forward. We made a commitment to JJC and the staff members that we're going to walk with them every step of the way, every step of the way, and so that's why it's so important to provide this board an update today that's transparent and open. At this time, I would entertain any questions.
Trustees, have any questions?
I do. Concerns and questions I have, you've talked about an architectural review.
Yes.
Is that anything as like an independent audit to come through?
Yes.
And figure out where we're at, because that's what some of the recommendations are that I've seen that I've gone through.
Can I respond to that? It's an ecosystem evaluation, so it's looking at the entire structure of IT.
And it has nothing to do with us and nothing to do with Campus Works, it's totally independent?
Absolutely.
Okay. Two, identify the phases and the finance of each phase that are totally aligned with the fiscal budget.
Yes.
That's something that you will provide then?
Yes.
Okay. What does the duplicate software look like, and is it now a good time to get rid of it?
Well, that's why I want to do an architect review before I can speak to that clearly. Yes.
The CRM?
Yes.
That's a heavy financially on the college, heavy financially, and it's hard for the faculty and the staff to learn it. They need, we need to specify for one year the duties of that and expectations for the people and for them to work solely and nothing else on that, from what I'm understanding from all the recommendations from people that I've talked to that have done ERP changes. So I don't know if they're thinking of that, because if they have to do their work and then figure the CRM out, it's too much.
Well, again, that's why I indicated it's important to have backfield positions. So before we implement a CRM, I want to make sure that we have staff members in place that can support the project. CRM in general, this project itself is a heavy lift.
Exactly. And I'm going to ask this, shouldn't the primary assessment by Campus Works have identified this stuff? Because when we look at everything that we're doing, and I look at the things that have occurred, because we've exceeded our budget, we've had unforeseen issues emerging in implementation, we've had functionality problems, costly project extensions that have dragged everything out, we stabilized periods lasting more than a year to go live with it, and we've had unanticipated third-party software needs that we've had to add to it. Those are things, and I know that all of this stuff with ERP started in the 1990s. So nobody knew what they were doing in the 90s. Now we've had three decades that have come, and it's more that we're supposed to know what we're doing, that we should be understanding it and have people that know what they're doing, because otherwise, are we doing it correctly or not? And the word that comes up, and I'll say this very carefully, is concern for anything that is male to the system, that we're not doing right. Are there things that we should be looking at? And maybe the architectural, the audit will come up and give us that information before any assessments are done, because we shouldn't be looking at making it the same as what we had it, but improving it so that we don't have to go through this again, because this is very costly, and I'm, yes, very sensitive, because I was on the board that approved the first installation part of it. So that's why I'm asking these questions, and I'm glad to give this to you.
Okay, thank you, and it seems like it was more of a statement than questions, so thank you for that.
It's just more of the thought process, because when I went through and I read Dr. Namua's email to us and all that was encompassed in it, those are the thought processes that I came up with.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, I just want to clarify that we have not exceeded the $6 million number that the board approved probably about a year and a half ago. I just want to be clear that we haven't done that.
Thank you, Kissel. I was going to make a comment about that as well.
Thank you, just one quick comment. So a lot of the concerns that trustee Broderick mentioned, when Dr. Namua brought us in and talked to us about it, he addressed that we had to work on all of those things, so we knew it, we knew it was going to be an expensive fix, we set a budget which we have not exceeded, so that's pretty much, we are not in charge of operations, Dr. Namua's in charge of operations with his team, so that's something that we should not be getting into the weeds on, so thank you for giving us all that information, I appreciate it.
Thank you, vice chairman Morales. Yes, Tim Borowski.
Dr. Farmer, thank you very much for the presentation, it was wonderful, and I recall being here on this board about a year and a half ago, and the amount of progress that has been made in this year and a half's time is actually quite incredible. So I'd like to thank you and the whole team for everything that you've done, I know this has been extremely difficult, and the fact that we've been under budget and we've been doing very well up to this point is extremely wonderful, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd also just like to point out that, yes, to trustee Morales's point, a lot of these concerns were not only brought up pretty recently, but they were actually brought up when I was still in office. We could see ahead of time and know that a lot of these problems were going to occur, and we budgeted for them. So a lot of those concerns that trustee Broderick did bring up, those are valid concerns, but we did think about these quite a long time ago, so thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
Item 1.6.2, the levy report from Jeff Heap.
I'd like to introduce Jeff Heap to the podium. I think this might be year twenty-three, where he's going to talk to us about the tax levy for 2024. Dr. Namua did provide a high-level summary to each one of you that just talked about that although the total amount has increased due to new construction, our tax rate has gone down, so Jeff's going to walk us through that and the timeline. Take it away, Jeff.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello. If you have seen this presentation, updated numbers, under the, the college is subject to the property tax caps that were placed back in law back in 1991. So under the tax cap, this is the formula the college has to follow. Basically, it determines our tax rate along with what our maximum tax extension levy would be if there was no new property. So it's last year's extension, we can request an increase up to the Consumer Price Index, and that is divided by the current year's assessed value less any new construction to get the EAV, and that gives you the rate, and then that rate's applied to all property, including new construction. So when we built the budget this past spring, these were the assumptions used, about a four-and-a-half percent increase to our operating funds, and that was comprised of the Consumer Price Index of 3.4% for calendar year twenty-three, and then about $300 million or 1.1% from new construction within our district. And then for debt service, that is based on... And then for debt service, that is based on the bond resolution when it was adopted. So that is set when the bonds were issued. And that has about a four-point-seven percent increase from what was in the resolution. Now we've gotten a little further through the year and started to get a couple preliminary numbers out of some of the counties. Expect at least a five percent increase to existing assessed value within our district overall. New construction seems to be running a little bit more than what was anticipated. I think we're trending toward about three-hundred-and-fifty or four-hundred million in total for the year. We'll not know final numbers on that until like March. And then the Consumer Price Index was known, it was calendar year twenty-three's rate. Under the tax cap scenario, you know, if the board decided not to capture that three-point-four percent increase that's allowed, even though our budget was based on it, it would reduce our levy by a little over two-point-three million. And since the prior year is the starting point under the tax cap law, you lose that two-point-three million plus any CPI adjustments going forward indefinitely. So basically, after twenty years, the key motive effect would be in the neighborhood of sixty-eight million. For debt service, our 2018 and 2021 alternate revenue bonds, the levy will be abated since the capital assessment fee covers the principal and interest payments on them. And what we're left with is basically our general obligation bond. And that goes back to the referendum that was approved back in 2008. So projections, and there's quite a few numbers up here, but the only variable between the columns is new property. So at the far left, it's three-hundred-and-fifty million of new property. At the far right, it's five-hundred-and-fifty million. And it kind of shows what the bottom-line extension of our tax levy would look like based on those variables of new construction. You know, without debt service, you know, operating funds basically just blows seventy-two million up to, you know, seventy-two-point-four million if new construction was five-hundred-and-fifty million. As a reference point, our budget was based on about seventy-one-point-seven million. So expectation is we will meet budget and be slightly over that. From an individual taxpayer perspective, you know, we kind of started this back in 2010 with a two-hundred-thousand-dollar market value house. You know, the calculation showed they would have paid the college about a hundred-and-fifty-two dollars in taxes. We've adjusted that market value of that house based on what our overall EAV did each year. You know, it was increasing, then after the recession in 2008, nine, we had quite a few years where their overall EAV of the district actually decreased. You know, and now for the last, you know, almost ten years, it's been increasing. In the last couple of years, housing, most people realizing housing prices have really kind of jumped. The assessed value of our district has grown quite a bit percentage-wise on existing property. One thing, when the assessed value of existing property increases more than the Consumer Price Index, it does have the effect of lowering your tax rate, the way the tax cap formula works. You can kind of see that on the bottom line, where kind of the cost per thousand of market value, that would decrease as our rate decreases, because the market value is increasing more than Consumer Price Index. But the average homeowner, in theory, should have just paid us their overall tax bill, their house adjusted in line with the market of the district, or market value of the district. Their increased tax bill would be in line of Consumer Price Index. So our proposed tax levy is based on our budget, plus a little, not quite one-and-a-half percent. Based on this, new construction would have to exceed five-hundred-and-fifty million not to capture it. I don't expect our final levy to be this high, but we've always factored in a little bit just so we don't lose any of the new construction. One item, you'll notice the final overall increase is only about four-point-one-two percent. The twenty-three extension, because of some estimation Will County did, we basically owe funds back. Our twenty-three extended levy is higher than it should have been. Which kind of leads in, you know, a little bit on the tax rate of what drives that, you know, the tax cap formula. There's true-up from the estimation the counties do, especially Will County. They represent eighty-two or three percent of our tax base, and they're the first one to finish. They do a lot of estimation for the other counties if the data is not available. And then we have the add-back from tax abatements or disagreements that the county settles after the extensions or the tax levies are finalized. You know, what shows up here is kind of three years of our tax rate, you know, what our actual was in twenty-two and twenty-three, and then an estimate for twenty-four. You can see where we would have started under the tax cap formula. And then you have either an increase or a decrease for prior year estimation. You know, in twenty-two, the Otis, you know, basically we captured a little bit additional, basically because Will County overestimated the assessed value of our district. The last couple of years, they've underestimated our assessed value, so the rate they calculated was slightly high. And to the tune of this coming year, it's almost six-hundred-thousand dollars that we'll give back. And that's why you see, you know, a quarter of a cent reduction. Next up, estimated levy, or tentative levies on the agenda for tonight. And then asking for, adopt the final levy at our November, the November board meeting. We'll publish a notice between seven and fourteen days prior to the November meeting and file with the county clerks by the last Tuesday in December, which happens to be December thirty-first this year. Questions? Any questions?
Jeff, what do you expect the, are we going for the max again, for the max levy? Is that what you're looking for?
In essence, we've always, yes.
When you got it last year, how much did we really get? When we went for the max, what was the number that really paid it out?
We came in right what we levied. New construction was basically right at five-hundred million last year. I mean, because from estimates I had to what the final number, it was like, a lot of stuff got added on, I guess, at the tail end by a couple of counties, because I was not expecting it to be that large.
Okay, so that's, you had a problem with the calculation that you were.
Not a problem, it's just didn't expect it to be that high.
Oh, I got you, okay.
Yeah.
I got you, all right, thank you.
We've always, it's been the philosophy, I guess, of this board, always, the extension asked is a little bit higher than what is expected in case new construction is higher than planned.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Item 1.6.3, Faculty Union Report.
Good evening, trustees. For those of you I haven't had the privilege to meet, I'm Kurt Ward. I'm a professor in the best department on program on campus, automotive. But I'm also the vice president of the Full-Time Faculty Union. Dr. Martyn Cink is away tonight at a six p.m. meeting with the AFT. He's representing JJC in higher education. I'll be brief. Bob told me that was important. I'll start by congratulating trustee Stan Borski on his appointment to the board.
Thank you.
I believe I speak for all faculty when I say we succeed when our students succeed. And you are one of many examples that we see around this campus on a daily basis of student success. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I also want to thank interim VP of Student Development, Robert Morris, and the many people in multiple departments across this campus who have been working diligently to remove the ghost students from our classes. We recognize this is a moving target, and it's not going to be perfect in January when we start the second semester, but it's going to be way better. So thank you to everybody on this campus who has had a role in that. And finally, it's week nine of the semester. That means we're better than halfway through the fall term. That means we're looking forward to exciting events like Discover JJC and a spring semester, which is right around the corner. So chairman, President Namuwa, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 1.6.4, the Adjunct Faculty Union Report by Dr. Barbara Wilhen.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I would also like to give congratulations to trustee Stan Borski on your, and thank you for your public service. As we all know who are in public service, it's not always an easy way, but your service is appreciated, as is everyone's on this board. I have nothing new to report, other than to echo the same words. We just passed our mid-semester, and we're heading in strong for final exams. And it looks like our numbers are remaining up, which is awesome. And so we're looking for that as well in the spring. All of our adjunct faculties have requested their courses for spring, so we're just waiting for those to populate. Any questions? I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to give one comment. I'm noticing in the high schools that I saw that, a lot of the teachers are looking into becoming adjuncts. So they're looking at the qualifications, so I just thought I'd show that they're interested in being a part of JJC.
As well they should be. We're a great place to be.
Item 1.6.5, the Building and Grounds Committee Report. The Building and Grounds Committee has not met since our last meeting, therefore the tribunal report. The same with the 1.6.6, the Board Policy Committee Report, and the Finance Committee Report. The next item is 1.6.8, the President's Report.
Thank you, Chairman Bedzinski, and members of the board, and members of the JJC community. I want to give, as my presentation's coming up here, as I often do, just an update on where we are in terms of enrollment currently, as of this morning, our head count is at fifteen-thousand-one-hundred-eighty-one students. And that represents a seven-point-five-one percent increase over this time last fall. Last fall, we had fourteen-thousand-one-hundred-twenty students at this time, so that represents over one-thousand new students. And as some of the trustees have recognized and acknowledged, much of that comes from students seventeen and under as a result of our dual credit. We have seen modest gains in our age ranges over eighteen-plus, but most of those gains comes from twelve-by-twelve-by-twelve. Dual credit is up twenty-one percent at this point, and I feel confident reporting that percentage as we're approaching sort of the end of the dual credit registration period. And that represents seventeen, excuse me, nineteen-thousand-seven-hundred-forty-six hours, credit hours. And I see my report pop up on the screen here. And I'll share, you know, just a couple of things, you know, just want to acknowledge Dr. Farmer and the cabinet for stabilizing our ERP. Many of the members of this board were here when I brought this to you for the very first time, probably within the first six months of my presidency. That was not an easy conversation initially, and subsequent conversations just got harder. So to be where we're at today, and sort of trustee Stan Borski's acknowledgement of where we were, fast-forward to where we are today, I'm very hopeful for the future to continue optimizing what we have and to continue modernizing what we have. And none of it, as it's been in the past, not a single thing about it, is easy. So again, we appreciate the board's support for the plan, recognize that we're going through this deliberately, diligently, with the college community in mind. And of course, the levy with you today. You know, the state of the college for me was really powerful. I appreciate, you know, all of the people who were there that day to support our vision for what the college is or can be. And I won't give you a recap, really, because the recording is there if anyone's interested in watching it. But I will say this, one theme throughout was there were dozens of prominent people in the audience who cared deeply about JJC. And I took time to acknowledge the Mike Mutterers of the world, Silver Cross Hospital CEO, the Jen Howard's of the world, the Mayor Missys of the world, the Mayor Offermans of the world, the Doug Pryers of the world, Mike Riddoffs of the world, and on and on and on and on, the Natalie Manleys of the world, individuals who spent time in our halls, walked our halls, walked across stage, shook the president's hand, and many years later can point to their time, do point to their time, at JJC is critical to their success. So my message was this, when I see our students, I see them. I see these prominent people, because our students will be prominent people one day. And that day, that room was really just a reminder of all that we do and how important it is. Speaking of important things, again, here we are, celebrating our Hispanic-serving institution designation. And just take a moment here, because this day, raising the Hispanic Heritage flag, I'm not going to count the number, dozen scores of members of the community, students, faculty, and staff took time out of their day to celebrate with us and celebrate we did. It was an incredible celebration, and this day will go down in the history of JJC as something to continue celebrating. Trustee Harris, I believe, will mention this a little bit later. But I just want to acknowledge this event at Prairie State on September twenty-seventh. So the president's council has put together a working group in an attempt to lead the conversation around BEP, around minority business procurement. And I was asked to serve on a panel and want to highlight, you know, Karen Kissel's leadership in that area. I want to highlight Matt Stevenson. Both joined me and gave me some great talking points, highlighting the reasons JJC has been in the top five for BEP procurement over the last two years. And we will continue to lead the way, because the things that we have put in place are critical to our EBC involvement, to our communication to minority businesses in advance of the procurement process, through our interactive procurement guide, through our partnerships with ABBA and LEDA. And Matt helped me recognize, and board of trustees, this was, I think, a surprise to many in the room, that eighty percent of our procurement are purchases under five-thousand dollars. So something that our procurement department is doing is working with our budget managers to ensure that we are supporting minority businesses and businesses that qualify for BEP certification. So Matt, Karen, thank you for your leadership in that space. On October fifth, Christie served as emcee of the inaugural Joliet Philanthropy Recognition Award Ceremony. And I'm reluctant to name all of the nonprofits, but the idea came from Christie working with Renaissance Center. And together, they were able to acknowledge volunteers from Rialto, Lightways Hospice, Casa of River Valley, the Holly Club, Rock and Roll Museum, LEDA and Zonta Club, just to name a few. And the final award went to our very own Christie Mulvey, and thankful that we've had an opportunity to recognize her incredible service to JJC. Tiana and I did, in fact, run most of the Foundation 5K. You'll most likely hear about this from Christie. Just want to again acknowledge the incredible work of the foundation. It is not easy to create an event with three-hundred runners. work of the Foundation. It is not easy to create an event with 300 runners, dozens of volunteers, and order perfect weather. I'm not quite sure how they do it, but they make it look very easy. Chairman, the final thought I wanted to offer this board is echoing something I shared during the State of the College. And in reference, you know, it was certainly referenced in the Herald's article, and I'm not quite sure how they, I don't know that I said we are leading the state. We are certainly statewide leaders in dual credit and 12 by 12 by 12. But I mentioned that I have endless energy for this work, and that comes from generations ago, because I'm the, the proof of the generational effects of higher education. And my message that day was that JJC's doors are wide open, both literally and figuratively. Those doors are wide open, because we do not pick and choose our students. Our students pick and choose us. Now, I want to take just a moment to acknowledge again the team as we celebrated those successes. Those successes aren't the guy on the front page, on the stage. I'm representing all the incredible work of the Cabinet, our leaders sitting in the back of the room there, our student leaders, and with the support of our trustees, look at what we've been able to accomplish together, and I'm so very optimistic for the future of Joliet Junior College. And with that, Chairman, I'll yield back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman.
Can I make a quick statement?
Yes.
Dr. Namowu, sadly, I missed the State of the College address. I wanted to be here, but I had a doctor's appointment. But I did, I know earlier this meeting, we talked, I heard something about concerning headlines in the paper, but I saw such a positive headline in the paper, which I was so happy to see after all that other garbage. Thank you for leading the college. Thank the staff, everybody that works here that has something to do with fixing this ERP system. We know it's not easy. We know it's, you're doing your own job, plus having to learn how to implement the new system. It's technology, and technology's changing so fast. So, thank all the, I want to thank all the staff members, the President's Cabinet, you know, everybody that works here, because we know that, that Klein is, is our leader, but it takes everybody's input. And as a board member, I know that I definitely support the work you're doing, and, and thank you for, you inherited a mess when you walked in. And even though you inherited that mess, you're still turning things around and, and just kicking butt. Thank you.
Item 1.7. At this time, the Chair's request for a motion to go into closed session under 2C-1.
So moved.
Second.
And roll papers.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Budzinski?
Yes.
Returning, item 1.8, return to public session. Need a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Budzinski?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item 1.9.1, the approval of minutes for the regular meeting held on September 11, 2024. Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
I am looking at the minutes, and I'm seeing information on why both the bills were picked, the bills were polled. I don't see that I had, it mentioned that I said of the KGG bills and the ACCT bill for Penn Fisher should have been on here. That's missing, under 3.1. And I see that when I'm looking at the approval of the agenda, there were things missing, because trustees don't get to put anything on there, and that should be, whenever a trustee wants something on the agenda, it should be put on there, and it can be voted on. Not that the Chair just makes a decision that it can or can't be on there. And then, also, the approval of the regular meeting, I did vote no, and it should be, there should be something that says no or why. And if that be the case, if you don't change that, then on under 4.3.1, where the Chairman addresses what should be on regarding Trustee Lee, that should be totally removed, because it should be identified in times in and out on the, on the minutes. It should not be this. So, if you're going to do, for one, you have to do it for all. So, if you're going to leave this in, then you better put mine in.
Any other comments?
Nope.
We're ready for a vote, please?
I asked to have that statement removed.
This isn't a vote for the approval of the agenda.
This is for the minutes.
Approval of the minutes.
The minutes, and this is what I'm looking at, the minutes. And I'm asking for some corrections to be made. Remove your statement, and then I'll leave everything else go. Equal treatment for both of us.
The pending motions, a motion to approve, they're submitted, and that's been seconded. There needs to be a vote on that. Ready to vote, please?
No.
Trustee Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
No.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Budzinski?
Yes.
The next seven minutes for September 25, 2024, be delayed until the litigation is resolved.
We still need a motion for this particular item, as a reminder.
So, I haven't called the item yet. So, I have to call the item first, correct?
Yes.
Item 1.9.2, approval of minutes for the special meeting held on September 25, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Now, discussion.
And see, I could have made that motion, Brian, ahead of him making the motion to approve.
No.
Because now, you're going to get a four or five to two vote on something that is, there's incorrect information in those minutes, absolutely incorrect.
Did you make a motion? Because I did not hear one.
I did. I said I made a motion to delay the approval of these minutes. I said that.
I didn't hear that.
I said, I'm making a motion.
I was, I was making a note. I did not hear it. It was made.
I said until legal litigation is, is resolved.
We'll go back to her initial motion. She wants to delay this vote. So, we'll go back to the motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
And now, a vote to delay it. Till when?
Till legal litigation is resolved.
What legal litigation?
The legal litigation that's involved with these minutes that the judge will see, because the information that's not-
I just asked what legal action. If you could please clarify, because you have a couple of them pending.
Legal action that Mr. Wonderlick has pursued.
Okay. Thank you. Call the roll, please.
No.
Trustee Morales?
No.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
No.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
No.
Trustee Queenie?
No.
Trustee Budzinski?
No.
Item 1.9.2, Chair requests approval for minutes, or motion for approval of minutes for special meeting held on September 25, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Ready to vote, please?
Trustee Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Are we voting on September 25 now?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
That's where I made the motion for that to be not for the September 25 ones.
You made a motion to delay until the litigation was decided, and that motion did not carry.
Okay, so now-
So, now a motion's been made to approve. It's been seconded, and the vote is being taken.
I'm going to say no.
Okay. Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
No.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Budzinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.1.0, approval of the agenda. Chair calls for a motion in a second to approve the agenda. It's submitted.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
No.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Budzinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.1.1, approval of consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I want certain things polled.
They are?
2.1.1, 2.1.2, 3.1, 3.2.10, and 3.2.13.
And I'd like to also announce that 2.1.3 had been removed from the agenda before voting.
Chair, can you repeat that number?
Uh, 2.1.3.
Okay.
Is green sheet removed?
Mm-hmm. I'm good.
On the original motion, we can take a vote?
Who made the second?
Who made the second?
Thought I had.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Budzinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 2.1.1. Need a motion for 2.1.1?
So moved.
Second.
And discussion?
I have one.
Okay.
In regards to the President's contract, I'm very concerned about overspending on any type of board action, especially in these inflationary times, when a lot of taxpayer, students, constituents are living paycheck to paycheck. The salary increase on this contract would be 14%, going from a salary of 281,100 to 325,000, which is a $39,000 salary increase. The majority of the Illinois Community College presidents are receiving 3% to 4% increases, with a couple receiving no more than five. The ICC provided a flow chart for all of the Illinois Community College presidents' salaries and benefits. In reviewing the chart, I feel that's an injustice for this board to support this extremely high salary increase. There are more benefits, too, that are aligned with other presidents, such as the vacation time, the buyback, a, the normal presidents are four weeks use it or lose it. I said, furthermore, there are current contractual concerns that I have as a trustee. There's been no long-term or short-term, short-term goals for the past two years that have been provided with us, no goals presented for this school, this current school year either. Contract issues in accordance, I have with the current contract, policy concerns I have, overrun of the budget expenses, expense personal travel expenses, which were over by about $15,639, while trustees, we don't get paid, but we can't get reimbursed for our trustee-related activities, but the president can overrun that account. Budget has increased in expenditures when the custom each year is to see budget cuts to conform with no overspending by the college. The 12 by 12 program has definitely increased the enrollment volume. However, the success of this program is seeing the student credits received to indicate the true success of this program, which hasn't been provided to us of the board. Morris Westward expansion. The Morris Expansion Committee has sent an email to the board of pulling out of this project, and reasons were provided by them with leadership concerns. Intentional exclusion of trustees, having the ability to do their fiduciary duties as elected JJC trustees, stating that the college is very rich to the board and to outsiders, is harmful. Concerns are still surrounding the ERP system, which is escalating needs for more money needed. Giving more power to the Chair and treating the Chair as a chancellor, not as an equal member, as all trustees should be treated, the Chair's powers only at the board meetings, not prohibiting trustees to do their fiduciary duties and participating in ICCTA and ACCT member activities for learning and networking. When I look at the days allowed to work with 260 days and subtract 13 holidays, 12 Fridays, off in the summer, 40 vacation days, the end result is 195 days. That, to me, if we use the carryover as another 18,750 paid to the president for his payback, or his first buyback. The salary increase, plus the benefits and reasons that I've provided, are of major concern to me. And the fact that we only got the contract less than 48 hours, as it's required to be given, 48 hours business days, not holiday, which was given on October 14th, I think, and the fact that the contract has not been given out publicly for the public to view it, and there's no language in the contract that arises in regards to the rise, the evaluation, and there was a vote, uh, there was a vote, there wasn't a vote on the annual salary for this increase on the, on this present year, which is supposed to be done. The other colleges do do it. They come out and they give the actual increase that's gone each year.
Thanks. It's fair. Any other discussion?
I just want to say that we have a president that inherited a mess, and in his short two years, he has gone above and beyond to uplift this college, the name of this college, and he deserves everything that is involved in the contract, not because he just deserves it, but because he's earned it. And we did give enough notice by posting the contract that's been posted on our website. JJC was open on Monday. I don't believe the staff here had a holiday that day. So, it's been posted. The board has been compliant with everything. It's unfortunate that some people are just bitter and unhappy. Thank you. I support the contract that we're up for today. That is being up for a vote today, rather.
Any other discussion?
I believe one of the most important qualities of a good leader is their ability to listen and make decisions that are in the best interest of everyone involved. JJC recently announced its westward expansion project in partnership with the city of Morris and Grundy County. The city of Morris and Grundy County were initially excited to put into action a plan that started with former President Dr. Judy Mitchell. She had built all the relationships and laid the groundwork with the help of a grant from Senator Sue Resin to the city of Morris for the expansion of the existing hangar. JJC was to add aviation to its courses and become a feeder school to Lewis University, as well as take on all existing programs at the Grundy County Vocational Center. However, our newly hired president has decided as a better choice of resources to drain our reserves to build a new building that, in the opinion of the Morris and Grundy County Expansion Team, risks laying dormant and unused, just as the Romeoville campus does. As I had read in the email earlier, sent to all trustees from the city of Morris, mayor of Morris, Morris Hospital and Health Center, and the entire county of Grundy, including Grundy County Vocational Center, Grundy County Economic Development Council, and Grundy County Chamber of Commerce and Industry, were moving their support of JJC's west-westward expansion. In addition to what I said in public comment, it is evident that the city of Morris and Grundy County have lost faith in our administrators, our administrative leadership, and their ability to listen to recommendations and make decisions in the best interest of our college, our community, and its partners. As one of seven trustee, I too have lost faith in president, in our president, and I, and for those reasons, as well as all of the reasons that Maureen has already stated. For him to say that we are rich, no, we built up those reserves for if there is ever a situation like when we had Rowner, that we don't have to raise tuition, where we don't have a budget for three years and we can't depend on state funding, that we will have that at reserves to fall back on, so we don't have to raise tuition or raise taxes. We are a financially responsible school, and have been for over 50 years, and saying that we are rich and wanting to blow through all of our reserves is very irresponsible. And it is not just myself or Maureen, but the entire city of Morris and the entire county of Grundy that does not agree with the decisions and does not believe that Dr. Namowu has the ability to listen. And although our Chair and our, and the committee, and the, and the executive committee will just willingly go along with whatever Dr. Namowu says, this, there is no transparency. I need my constituents to know. Look into what Maureen is saying. This man is going to be making, we are a junior college, and he will be one of the top paid people in Joliet. We are a junior college that, that, to the, to the students that we serve. We are serving those who don't, who are a majority on medical card, on link card, and on, on government assistance. But yet, look at the salary that the president, who thinks we're rich, is asking for, and what these trustees are going to vote for tonight.
Any other trustee comments?
I have one. Thank you for the opportunity to talk. I want to thank everyone that came out to support the contract that we're going to be voting on tonight. As a reminder, well, thank you, Dr. Namowu, for your leadership, your presence in the community, and just the overall success that we have had over the last two years that you have been in leadership. So, thank you for that. Something that JJC prides itself, and it's making sure that we're focusing on engagement, retention, and also graduation of our students. And all of that requires- And all of that requires to have a really good partnership with different partners out in the community and build a really good relationship. So I am in full support of, uh, continuing to have you as our leader, uh, and making sure that we're able to move forward. Something that the students mentioned, that I do want to highlight and also thank them, is just everything that is going on, uh, with the lack of being able to work together, uh, and all of that is going to impact, uh, our ability to be leaders, so that shouldn't necessarily be something that we're talking about, just for specific trustees that do not know, uh, what their role is here at JJC. Uh, so I definitely want to make sure that we are able to move forward, and keep in mind what is our true goal, in making sure that we're supporting our students and be successful, provide all the necessary tools that we're able to do, uh, in order for them to be able to move forward in whatever career they have. So again, I'm in full support of the contract as we move forward. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I'll have a public comment, or not a public comment, but a comment as a trustee.
Sure.
So, I, I was listening to some of the, um, the discussion that was going on previously. I find it interesting that a lot of times the specifics around the particularities of what's being said isn't entirely accurate, so to speak. So, um, something that trustee Lee said is that Lewis was going to be a feeder school. I go to Lewis, and a lot of the kids that go to Lewis are from JJC. That's not, that's an either-or statement, um, that's just simply not true.
For aviation, sweetie, for aviation.
It's simply not true, it's not true. The second thing...
That's a reminder, no cross-talk.
Thank you. That's simply not true. Um, another thing I'd like to bring up is that, um, somehow you took a quote from the president and blown it into proportion to say, "Blow through all of the funds." This was not said, this is a addition, this is something that is constructed, that's not factual, that's not what was said at all. Um, I'd like to just point that out, because there's a lot of places in these discussions, I would recommend the public to look into this, just re-listen to the tape. Um, there's a lot of places that, that's not entirely accurate, where you kind of slip by rhetorically, and what's being said isn't actually what is being meant. So I, I am in full support of this, because quite frankly, in the days that I've been able to look through this, the time that I've spent looking through this, it is a very pretty clear cut contract, and I'm more than happy to support it. Um, I just hope that other trustees are able to look into that information, um, with the same level of respect that, um, other trustees on the board can. So, thank you.
Does the board have any other discussion?
I would like to, uh, ask the president and the chair to invite maybe, you know, the Grundy County expansion team to talk in front of the entire public, and then we'll see what's true and what's not true about being a feeder school for Ulyssus University, for the hangar, and the grant, and everything that I said, since you would like to say that I'm speaking untruthfully, I'd like you to check your facts, and how about we invite the expansion committee to speak in front of all of the public on everything that they feel? Why haven't they been invited to speak? And tell us what's going on? If everything I'm saying is untrue?
They don't need an invitation, this is, they know when our meetings are, and they are welcome to come whenever they like. Um, and the, the salary, this, no cross-talk. Please respect me as I'm speaking now. Um, the salary we're paying Dr. Namuwa is a very fair salary, it's very justified. He has a higher level of education, lots of experience, and he's already proven his skills and abilities. Okay, if other people want to make that salary, they can go back to school, get a PhD, and apply for a presidential job.
And I'm going to make one last comment. We are mirroring the College of DuPage with golden parachutes, golden carrots, and I am not going to be a part of that at all and be sued, as the president sued the trustees at the College of DuPage. I don't want to be included in that type of behavior, or resembling any type of that, of my vote in the contract, so my vote will be no.
You're the one suing us.
Case. Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. I truly believe Dr. Namuwa has, has done, uh, an excellent job. It's unfortunate that we, as the board, did not present the goals like we should have. Things did happen, and we just didn't, uh, get them, uh, so that he could show that he has met and exceeded the goals. Um, and that part, again, this board will have to take the responsibility of that, because we didn't do what we were supposed to do. Um, I, I know that it is a, uh, a, a salary that, um, in this area may be a little high, but I do believe that he does deserve that, and, uh, once, once, um, we make the goals next year, he will exceed them. I truly believe that. And based on that, I'm just going to abstain from the vote.
The goals were, we, we have a strategic plan that is out there, and it's published on the website, and he met every single mark in the strategic plan, those were his goals, so this board did not fail him on that.
When do you plan on giving him the goals that we gave you then?
Your time is up.
I just asked her when she's going to give the goals.
Again, your time is up.
I got it.
Anyone who hasn't spoken? We will now take a vote on recommending the approval of the president's employment contract.
Trustee Lee?
No.
Trustee Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee Harris?
Abstain.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stanborski?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Budzinski?
Yes.
Five-two, motion carries.
Next item is 2.1.2, recommending approval of appointment of vice president's student development. Any other motion?
Second.
Discussion?
My concern is that we did not get this 48 hours before, like we should have had the material to review, so that we could have seen who the candidate was. That's where my concern falls, as I mentioned, uh, in regards to this situation. We should have not been green shaded, we should have had the information in our board book.
We hire only one person, and that's our president. This is a vice president of student development, therefore his staff, it's their job, that's operations, we don't need to have that within 48 hours, so we're, this is, we are in compliance.
I would just like to state, as with Dr. Judy Mitchell, we were given three candidates for every single position, and able to look over those qualifications and decide as a board which one is, what is going on with this president, is he continuously only gives us one recommendation, we do not get to see the qualifications for the other three candidates, and I therefore will be voting no, because I would like to see the other candidates, and I would like to see their, the, their, uh, credentials versus the person that was chosen, and I feel that we deserve to see those things. No transparency at all with this administration.
Judy Mitchell did the same thing when we hired chief police officer, okay? So we are fully transparent, and that's getting into the weeds. We need to know what our role is, okay?
Right. Whenever anybody has a question but you, then we need to know our role.
Any other comments from other trustees?
Seeing that we all are volunteers on this board, I'm glad that there is staff that can go through all of those 100 applications, because unfortunately, I just wouldn't have the time. So I thank you for bringing a qualified candidate to us, so that we can vote on him.
Yeah, thank you.
Exactly.
So we are ready to vote on recommending the approval of appointment of vice president of student development.
Trustee Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
No, because I didn't get the information in time.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
No.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stanborski?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Budzinski?
Yes.
Next item is 3.1, approval to pay the listing of bills for the period ending September 30th, 2024 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Okay, the concerns and questions I have, once again, was KGG legal bill of $14,781.50, when last month it was $13,000, the previous month it was $31,000. I just got the review, or just got the bills, I have not had a chance to review it. I think this should be polled, so that we all can review what is involved with this, because this is higher than what RCK ever charged us. And then also on Campus Works, I think, if I'm not mistaken, and I'm, I'm looking at it, is this two months that are in there for the 31, 427? Because it looks like it's duplicated, and it says for the same thing for...
No, it's for our project manager.
It's for what?
Our project manager, Lisa Richardson.
It's for both of them, then? That's their salary then, that they get each month?
Correct.
Okay, and the 55 for the amendment, that is for... It's $55,062.
That's for our data cleanup project.
For your cleanup process?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you. And then in regards to Workday, I see a $706,874. It says payment six of 10. When we get to 10, what happens at 10?
So once we get to 10, we will move forward and renegotiate the contract.
So, that is just the number right now?
Correct.
That we were under for 10 years?
Correct.
So that's a 10-year contract?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the bills? We're ready for a vote, please.
Trustee Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
No.
Trustee Stanborski?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Budzinski?
Yes.
Six to two, motion carries.
Item 3.2.10, RFP for the managed detection and response services. Need a motion, one second.
Second.
Discussion?
My question is this, um, I know there's no dollar amounts here, but how do we, when we're looking at the BEP, how do we know that any of this, that any of these could have qualified or not qualified? Is that something you do, that we're not seeing the dollar amount? Because we usually did see on RFPs, we did usually see dollar amounts at one point in time.
Chairman Budzinski, trustees, uh, trustee Broderick, thank you for that question. It actually gives us an opportunity to highlight the RFP process and the matrix we use, so, yeah, appreciate that, so I'm going to toss it to either Dr. Farmer or Karen Gissel.
Karen Gissel. When we look at a proposal for services, it's not just the cost that we evaluate. We prepare a rubric or a matrix that each one of the team members crafts, and we present that with the RFP. So, the vendor who wins is the one who scores the highest. It's not about price, it's not about lowest cost, it's about the one who successfully meets the criteria the best of all of the vendors who provided proposals to this institution.
So do you show that to the competitors that are coming in, to know what the rubric is then?
Yes, they know, they know what the criteria are.
So we don't have to worry about anything with regards to BEP then, and concerns of this?
We do have a BEP component in our rubric. Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this item?
No.
You ready to vote, please?
Trustee Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Stephanie.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stanborski?
Yes.
Trustee Budzinski?
Yes.
Next item is 3.2.13, the sole source purchases for homeless and food insecure students various.
So moved.
Second.
My question is this, I saw Sam's Club gift cards. Do we have anything that they have to be a member? Because whenever you go to Sam's Club or Costco, you have to show your membership. So if they get these cards, is there something that they have to belong, or do they get a pass? What happens with it?
Chairman Budzinski and trustee Broderick, thank you for this question, um, and, and I think this is, this is part of some additional information, uh, we offer to the board, but for the college community, I think this is again, another opportunity to highlight how we're using grant dollars, uh, to support our students. I'm going to toss it to Dr. Farmer, but I anticipate she'll toss it over to Bob Morris.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just concerned, because if they get it and they can't go in and use it, because you have to show your membership card to get in, and I can't even give my membership card for Costco to my husband, because it's a woman, not a man. So I'm just asking what the requirements would be if they do. I mean, it's great that you're giving this.
Yeah.
But I think I'm bringing that up as a concern of membership.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so, we offer a, a lot of support services for our students, so I am going to ask for Bob Morris to respond, but also... Have, um, Dr. Stephanie Brown, who can talk a little bit more about ARPA.
Thank you.
So, yes, that's a good question. Um, Stephanie Brown? My mom voice wasn't enough, I will turn on the microphone. Um, Sam's Club, we use that to buy food for the micropantries.
Okay.
So we don't provide Sam's Club gift cards for just that reason.
That's good then, okay. Thank you for making that clear.
No problem.
I appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Dr. Brown.
Any other information? Kelly, we're ready for the roll, please.
Trustee Garcia-Gian?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stanborski?
Yes.
Trustee Queen?
Yes.
Trustee Budzinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item number five, reports, 5.1, the student trustee report.
Hello, everybody, happy Wednesday. Um, this is my, the student trustee report for the October 16th board meeting. Uh, I'm, my name is Ryan Queenie, my pronouns are they/them. Uh, to start off, and as always, I want to talk about some recent campus community events, which I know Dr. Namuwa highlighted some earlier, but just to give you some insight on some other things going on, on campus, state of the college on the 4th, of course, which some of you were able to attend, where Dr. Namuwa gave updates about what was going on around the college, and about the different programs that the colleges, and initiatives that are in the colleges starting in the next few years, or I'm working with. Then there was also Rock the Vote, which was on the bridge on the 9th, and that was a chance for students to learn about civic engagement opportunities, and learn how to, just about how to be aware of, uh, the upcoming election, and how to get involved. Then Pride Alliance hosted National Coming Out Day on, uh, October 10th on the bridge, and that was a nice celebration for the students to kind of just come and celebrate their identities and who they are. And then, of course, after that was Disability Awareness Day on the 15th, which was another great opportunity for students to come and just learn, and also they had speakers talking about different disabilities, and CMAS hosted the Working Well and Documented Session on the 15th as well, and then, uh, the weekend, this last weekend, ICSA and PTK's Student Leadership Conference was, uh, at Elgin Community College. Uh, then I wanted to give a highlight about some upcoming events, and I know some of you are waiting to hear this, Trunk or Treat is coming up this Friday on the 18th from 4:00 to 6:00 in the main campus, South Lot 2. And then after that, this Saturday is Repair Cafe, uh, at Romeoville Campus from 10:00 to 3:00. Then there will be the Schmeck Sustainability Summit on the 25th, again, from 10:00 to 3:00, that will be hosted in Lower J. That same night, the evening of the Idolly Club, will be hosting their Halloween Bash Celebration, uh, from 7:00 to 11:00, again, in Lower J Building. And then on the 7th of November, there will be a Veterans Day Ceremony, where they will start out in the Picnic Grove that day from 11:00 to 11:15, uh, where they will have a color, color guards from, I believe, Joliet High School there, and then they will move from there to a social hour, uh, and just gathering in the Veterans Resource Center from 11:15 to 1:00. So, now for some updates about the student Community College Baccalaureate Survey, since the results have come back. And this is just some of the updates tonight, so we're gonna have some more later. But to start, JJC surveyed one thousand three hundred and seventy-two students. That was the majority of students over the six colleges that participated. So, of those students, the top three degrees that our students are currently pursuing are our Associate's in Arts degree. Then, of course, the Associate's in Applied Science and Associate's in Science. And from there, we also asked students when they expected to graduate from JJC as well, which we got different results. Some thirty-two percent of our students expected to graduate by 2026 or later. Eighteen percent expected to graduate by 2025 spring semester. Then sixteen percent were not really sure when they were gonna graduate, which is understandable. We have a lot of students here who follow non-traditional education paths. And then we also had thirteen percent who are gonna be graduating by the end of this fall semester, which is just really, really impressive, I think. And then thirteen percent will also graduate by the end of the fall semester next year. And then eight percent will graduate over the summer of next year. So, for the students who were graduating from JJC, we'd asked them all about their plans after graduation. And seventy-seven percent said they want to continue their education after they graduate. Forty-six percent had plans to look for work using their associates. And we only had eighteen percent of students who just planned to continue working in their current fields and jobs with the degrees they had earned. So, we also asked students beyond those future plans, if they were receiving their education, what we were looking for, what they were looking for if they had made any plans. And sixty-one percent of the students who answered the survey have made plans to pursue their bachelor's and will know where they're going. But thirty-four percent have not started to think about it or make plans on how to achieve that goal. And three percent of the students said they hadn't thought about getting their bachelor's. And only one percent said they weren't interested in it. And that's interesting to share too, because when we asked students about if they thought of their bachelor's, again, fifty-four said yes, they had thought of only, and only forty-five said no, they hadn't thought about where they would go to receive that degree, which will lead me to my next point. If they weren't looking for those degrees, what were those reasons? For thirty-six percent, they said they didn't feel they needed the bachelor's to achieve their personal goals. Thirty-three percent said they couldn't afford the cost of it. Twenty-eight percent, they needed to work and won't have time for school once they graduate from here. Twenty-two percent gave other specific reasons, which I'll get into in a further presentation when we talk more about barriers that students are facing. Then twenty-one percent also said they had family responsibilities that would prevent them from having time for school. And then only nine percent said that the colleges and universities that were offering bachelor's were too far away for them to attend. But there was a lot of barriers our students did list. And then for the students, if we did ask if JJC were to offer bachelor's, how would that affect the student interest? And eighty-one percent of students said if JJC were to offer baccalaureate degrees, they would be more interested in pursuing that degree. Only seven percent said it would somewhat increase that interest. And then seven percent said it wouldn't affect that interest. But the overwhelming majority says if we can get this going at JJC, if we can get these laws changed in the Senate and work towards this, the students want to see this as a goal. So, before I bring into, I'm done with this. I'll have more updates for you all in the next meeting. But I do have one last topic, and I think some of you will already be familiar, as we've had some comments tonight about it and concerned. But it's something the students have talked with me about, and I wanted to bring it up with the board and let you all know. Students have began organizing and hosting free speech tables around the campus to express their concern over the current JJC Board and the lawsuits and recent conduct. They have concerns about the trustees suing the college. They're concerned about trustees pursuing personal agendas that don't benefit the student body as a whole. And then they're also very concerned about how well this Board of Trustees is representing the diverse student interest at JJC. These are, I mean, it's uncomfortable for me to bring this to you, as I'm sure it's uncomfortable to hear it. But these are these things that I've heard from students, and I wanted to make sure that, you know, I know we can work towards making doing better as a board. So, I just want to make a commitment to students as the student trustee that I'm gonna work with this board to make sure that we are doing better and making sure that we aren't having students who are concerned. Because I don't, I don't ever want to hear students coming to me saying they're worried about trustees that aren't representing students. That's what we're all here to do. We all want to represent students and support them in the best way possible. And it's very concerning when students don't feel that. So, that's all I have for now. And I am willing to take any questions.
I do have a comment.
Please.
So, on your slide, you had two things that stand out. I know when, even with the twelve by twelve that Dr. Numul came up with, we were looking for those students that were lost and did not know where to go and what was next.
Yeah.
And you pointed out that sixteen percent of our students are on a non-traditional path.
They don't know when they're graduating.
Those are big wins for us, because a lot of them were probably sitting at home last year thinking, should I do this, should I not?
Yeah.
Am I, you know, able to be a student? So, that sixteen percent to me is a big win. And then your comment on the slide after that was the amount of students that weren't sure where to go next.
Yeah.
Not sure where to go next. I think that's another area of opportunity for us. And if we did have bachelor's degrees, that could be, you know, could solve a lot of that. So, thank you for that research.
And I just shared something to do with President's Cabinet a week ago when I was sharing some results out too, that I think, again, where you're saying that the forty-one, forty-three percent of students who don't know where they're going, that is our target. Those are the students who we can, if we can get this going, it's not something they have to think about. They're here. We have them in the doors. Let's start getting them on path for bachelor's degrees for, to help them get into the career fields. So, is there any other questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Yes.
That second bullet point on your last page.
This one?
Yeah. Where it says JJC trustees pursuing personal agendas that do not benefit the student body as a whole. Did they give you any examples?
I think it was just more just concern, especially with all the headlines lately and all the recent lawsuits. And it is just, there are concerns among, about the JJC Board as a whole.
Okay. But you'll be this next.
As I receive it, I will make sure to bring it to you, yes.
All right, thank you.
I just want to say thank you. It was a great report. And it's disappointing that you, as a student, as our previous student, Ayesha, also had to bring this to us. So, you know, I do my best to dispel any myths of any headlines that are out there and misconceptions and miscommunication. I think our president's doing a great job. And, you know, you're doing an excellent job as well. So, thank you for the thorough report. And, you know, keep listening to the students and keep being their voice and engage them. These are public meetings. Nobody needs an invitation to come. Anybody can come out. So, thank you for that.
No problem, thank you.
Yes. Oh, trustee Queenie, that was an excellent student trustee presentation, if I may say so myself.
Thank you.
Incredible work. I was going to, I could spend all day talking about it because I love these presentations. But I was gonna point out ICSA. If you guys have ever seen ICSA advertised around campus, I wanted to point out, as trustee Queenie, I'm sure is aware, that ICSA is incredibly valuable for getting students from different college campuses to come and like, talk to each other.
Absolutely.
This is extremely valuable communication, which the administration does a huge amount of work to make sure that the students have activities and things to do that are interesting and move them towards their goals. But students are a huge part of that equation. So, what ICSA does is it brings student leaders from across different campuses and gets them to talk together. So, I am so happy that ICSA went well. It is incredible experience. It was here at JJC a couple of years back.
Yes, I actually attended when they hosted it.
Yeah, you too. Yeah, it was pretty great. Yeah, it was fantastic.
Yeah.
So, that was wonderful. Thank you, trustee Queenie. And the second thing I was going to point out is that I, the eighty-one percent want baccalaureate degrees. That is an incredible number.
Isn't it?
And also not surprising from my own personal conversation. So, I'm glad to see that it's borne out in the data that you were able to obtain.
Yes, and I'll have definitely more data for you next month, too.
Thank you very much, trustee Queenie.
Thank you.
Ron?
I have a comment.
Yes.
Thank you for the wonderful presentation. And it's really kudos to you in terms of getting so many, getting so many students to actually be able to be interested and participate in this survey. It provides a lot of data points in order for us to figure out those target areas or those areas of opportunity as we move forward. So, thank you for that. And thank you for showcasing all the different events that we have on campus as a way to continue to engage our students outside the classroom and provide those opportunities for them to network, get to know each other, connect with others. So, thank you for doing, showcasing everything that we're doing. So, thank you.
Just one last quick thing, and I'd be remiss to not say anything. Thank you, everybody's been saying thank you to getting all the student responses. Thank you to everybody who helped push this survey out. Thank you to Bob Morris for helping with the student email. Thank you to Chris Oswickle for helping getting our canvas. Thank you to Kelly Rookinelli and the marketing team for helping to get it on the screens and the blast emails and everything. This would not have been possible without a joint effort for the entire JJC community working together. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five point two, representative to the JJC Foundation. Item five point three, representative to the ICCTA and the ACCT, Diane Harris.
How did that change? Because under oh-one point two seven point zero zero, your ability is to appoint, not to remove. So, Michelle is still the ICCTA rep until April of next year.
No, she's not. Michelle has not been showing up at the annual meeting. She's walked out of eight meetings here in a row. She doesn't attend. She doesn't communicate with anyone. I need someone that's gonna go and represent.
That is so not true. You have not responded to my text messages and me requesting to have a different day for the policy committee. And when have I not showed up to the ICCTA meetings? I have showed up to all of them besides.
Again.
I was, I was.
The chair has the right to appoint a committee.
No, it doesn't. Show me the palace.
A point, not to remove.
Because you don't. It says to appoint, not to remove. So, she's still on the policy.
No, she's not.
And she's still the ICCTA.
This is retaliation because I don't agree with you.
You're cross speaking. You guys are cross speaking. But attorney, attorney.
It's not retaliation.
It is retaliation because you don't agree. How do I not show up for anything? Just because I leave the closed sessions? Because I will be harassed by you? Does not mean, I have a medic, I have a doctor that says that I don't have to because of the harassment that I have received. I am literally shaking from all of you, and you know it. So, no, I show up. Just because I leave, I have every right to leave. I do not have to say that.
How many people see meetings have we had to cancel because of you?
How many have we had to cancel because of Garcia-Guean? I requested a different day and time because my child's school schedule changed. And last year, that wasn't a problem, Jim.
If we can get back to the.
And you can.
Stop, stop.
Not to mention that Diane Harris has said that she has, she has said multiple times that she does not have time for this because she's running for another office. And if she wins, we'll have to step down. But she's being put on all of these committees along with our student trustee. And retaliation because Maureen and I do not agree with what they're doing at this school. And we have every, there is, we are elected for a reason. If we have something.
We will stay on the agenda.
Okay, that's fine. I'll say it under trustee updates. Let's keep moving.
Trustee Harris, do we have any ICCTA information?
We do. Okay. Well, first of all, as you know, we were in Springfield on the thirteenth.
Wait, was I there, Diane? But I did, but I was there. So, even though if I wasn't.
Let her get the report, please.
Just, just to say that I was there.
It's just somehow she's all prepared for it.
Yes, I am prepared for it. Okay. All right. So, anyway, this report will be provided as it was.
Spare me all you want.
Springfield. And I'm happy to have been appointed as our JJC voting delegate for the ICCTA. I'm proud of that. Next. So, these are some of the items that we're gonna talk about. We're not gonna get all into detail, just a few bullet points. Roundtable discussion, some guidelines for presidential search to award criteria and dates. Diversity update, trustee education and leadership, government relationships, policy, and incentive tips and takeaways. Sorry. Next. Okay. All right. So, there was a session on finding a right leader, a roadmap for presidential searches. This was just a presentation. There were other areas that were definitely in search for a new president. Currently, we have ours. I put the name up there, but I noticed I left out the G. Dr. Clyde Numul, G H Numul, president of Joliet Junior College. The information was provided by the Poly Group. It's an academic search consultant group. They gave us some key components on how to, how to and the timeframes in which it should work. They say sometimes it takes five months or more and gave guidelines for what should be done each month to stay on track. Of course, I was not here when Dr. Numul was appointed, and I'm sure some of you were here long before that. But these are just some of the guidelines that they gave us, you know. Should there be an interim incumbent? And how long the president will stay during the time they're looking for search? How long the search will be? Who will be on the committee? What information is expected from applicants, et cetera? And some of the keys to a successful search. And the main focus, or the most important thing here, was confidentiality. So, yeah, so, so that's it for that one. so that's it for that one, thanks. Okay, and as the vice president of the Awards Committee for ICCTA, these are some of the awards that will be presented in Seattle next week, and I would like to congratulate our DEI director, Dr. Esquertina Irving, and her team for being awarded the Equity and Diversity Award, and we have four out of the state of Illinois that will be awarded, so I think that's, that's a great accomplishment. And I do have a copy of the DEI statement from the Illinois Community College if anybody would like one, so, next. Okay, diversity update. Focus, the focus is on the diversity statement, as I mentioned, we do have a copy of it if anybody is interested, and they also, we also talked about the thirty percent BEP, and that's, there'll be more discussion on that, Dr. Numul talked about that earlier, and he is on the task force, so I didn't add much on that, so we'll be hearing from him on that, and again, congratulations to Dr. Irving. Okay, now this, kind of hard to see, I did this about two o'clock today, so it's kind of hard to see, let's see. Okay, for the trustee roundtable, the trustees always have topics of discussion, and there's usually about fifteen topics, and they pick the top three or four that they want to talk about. One of them was focused on communication and how to communicate with your board, so basically, the information exchange is what's very important in terms of educating the trustees, it helps to build effective leadership for trustees within our boards on the local level, and also the training and understanding our roles, and I think that was talked about here a while ago or maybe today, but it's always talked about, anytime we're at these meetings, that's what they focus on, understanding our roles, and it helps us to know what's best for the college and the students. Once we know what we're supposed to do, it will benefit the college and the students. And also advocacy, we focus on that, and but the main focus is communication is key, as you can see I have the arrows meeting each other, because the education goes along with the leadership, information exchange goes along with the education, so once we put those things together, communication is key, and we should be able to, we should be able to, to work together to, for the benefit of the college. Next. Thank you. Let's see, that's government relations, okay, yes, now the talks are still going on about the baccalaureate degree, we have the nod from our area, but legislators, but it's other areas that are still pushing back. There is a task force created, and our president, Dr. Numul, is on that one as well, and so we'll be hearing more about that to come, and Queenie, thank you for the information that you gave as far as the baccalaureate degree.
Oh, thank you.
And then also, the government relations also discuss the mandate of becoming thirty percent compliant for minority businesses, and that goes along with the BEP task force, so we'll be hearing more on that. I think that's about, oh, there's one other. Next. Okay, all right, now, the final tips and the takeaways. Reflect on my own performance as I'm doing, and question, am I doing what I was elected to do? And familiarizing myself with other board members outside of the boardroom, other trustees from other areas, there's forty-eight community colleges within the state of Illinois, so if I only know these two, it's not beneficial, beneficial to me, so my goal is to meet a lot of other trustees. And this one was kind of significant, because I met a lady, she and I are the same age, trustee from Illinois Central College, and our names are spelled the same way, and that's kind of rare, but anyway, so, yeah, it was just great to meet another one, and so that's about it. The focus is to always remember that we're stronger together as a board, so that's about it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm gonna start over here with trustee reports, trustee Queenie.
Well, I mean, I just gave this student trustee update, I don't really have many other updates, I'll be heading to Seattle with other members of the board next week, and I'm looking forward to that experience and that leadership opportunity, and I'm gonna hopefully be able to bring some really impactful things back to our students, and thank you to our, again, thank you to the students who've been here the whole night, so that's all I have, and I'll cast it on to.
Trustee Stan Borski.
Hello, I am trustee Stan Borski, and I am a little bit new here, so I've been taking some, by some, I mean quite a lot of time to go back and review all of the information that I have missed in the last year since I was on the board, so I've been getting up to speed at lightning rate, and I'm extremely excited to go to Seattle and talk with my fellow trustees, and, and I can't wait to do more on this board, so thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Trustee Garcia again.
Yes, thank you, I just want to make sure that I take some time to thank all our wonderful students for coming out and staying here during the duration of the meeting, so thank you, as well as our special guests, and that would be all.
Thank you. Trustee Morales.
Hi, thank you, so there's a trip that was mentioned that is gonna take place next week to Seattle, this will be the first trip that I not participate in because I'm still going through some medical treatment, but I did, as a trustee, we all get a budget to go to the ICCTA workshops in Springfield or to go to the trip in Seattle, we have to stay within our means, right? And so I chose to not go to this and reserve my budget for other events that are, will be upcoming later, so I will miss that trip, please take good notes and share them with me, I'm excited to hear that, and again, I want to just echo what trustee Garcia said, thank you to all the students that came out, we are here, we are elected to, by the people to come out and represent the students, the constituents, to make sure that what we're pushing forward is, number one, hiring a person that has the students' overall best interest in mind, and expanding the college is definitely, you know, in the radar, it may not happen in Grundy, it might happen somewhere else, but it's gonna happen, okay? So I'm just grateful that I, it's a privilege for me to be going almost on ten years serving this college, because we don't get paid a nickel to be here, we really are public servants, and we're doing it for the betterment of the community and the students, because education is what transforms lives, and that's why I'm here, not because I'm pushing in a certain agenda, my agenda is, is you all, the betterment of the school and all of our staff that work here that make things happen for the students. So having said that, just, you know, thank you everybody, and good luck to my, my colleagues on the trip next week, thank you.
Trustee Bradrick.
Two things that trustee Harris did not mention, the roundtable was understanding our role and the part we play as a community college trustee for development beyond mandatory training, timing, frequency, focus, topics, other than board evaluation, and they highly recommended four to five sessions about fiduciary responsibilities, financing, identifying policy, budget priorities, education is primary, promote more education than mandatory education, which was the big concern. The second one was duties of your chair and the do's and don'ts that a chair can and can't do. Does your chair have more power than he or she is entitled to per the policies? How well does your chair communicate to the full board and how experienced is your board chair? They said the board chair must be an excellent communicator, the board chair must forget the personalities and do what's best for the students in maintaining a functional board. Chairs need to be effective, chairs need to know the policies and follow them, they need to be approachable, open-minded communicator, treats all trustees equally, doesn't hide anything from the board, works as the team leader of the board to keep them working together. Chairs shape the agenda but should allow the trustee's suggestions to be included, even if it's only one trustee's idea. Chairs should always work on getting a consensus of the board, talking with each trustee. Chairs should welcome the input through each trustee. Chairs have no responsibility more than each trustee, chairs only one time that they have the powers at the meeting, other than that, they are equal to all trustees. Chairs need to have the entire trust of the board, chairs need to make things work and not cause anything to cause any type of chaos or dysfunction. Chairs must know the communication is the key to their position and their success, and all trustees' concerns are heard and attended to. Chairs' experience will bring success to the board, and they should never be afraid to learn from the senior members, which can be developed in developing and mentoring other ICC, at ICCTA conferences. Chairs should work on shorter meetings, if need be, go to committees of a whole to eliminate long monthly board meetings, the cabinet can give their reports at those meetings, allowing regular business at the monthly meetings to shorten those meetings, the meetings can be.
Time's up. Trustee Lee.
You know, it's interesting that we say communication is key, and yet, the reason why I am being chastised by this board is because I brought to the board's attention and recalled for a special meeting because of the lack of transparency and the lack of communication from our council and our president about pertinent legal issues, and about removing the term men and women from scholarships, which I think is a big deal, removing the term men and women and making everything gender neutral, because there is such a thing as a man and there is a woman, and regardless if you are a they/them and you are, prefer to be called a, by a different pronouns, there still is the fact that there is a man and there is a woman, and you should be able to be proud to be a man, and you should be able to be proud to be a woman, and so for all of my constituents that, you know, maybe the majority of the board doesn't agree with me, and maybe some students don't either, there are people who elected me who do agree with me, and I'm here to stand up for them, even if they won't come and make a public comment.
Is this an update or are you yelling at me?
I'm not yelling at you, I'm speaking to everyone in the room.
It doesn't seem like it.
I'm sorry trustee Queenie.
Thank you.
I apologize.
And.
Hey, you're speaking to everyone in the room, I'm proud to be a student and a person, I don't care what gender pronouns are referred to me as, as long as my voice is heard and represented, and really, amongst students, the board, as I see it.
This is not public comment, I'm sorry, you can come back next week, this is my trustee update, so can I have my time back that she just took from me? Thank you, you can come back next week, sweetie.
I actually do want to hear what the student is.
Well, then you can give her your trustee update, and as a matter of fact, that's public comment, and she shouldn't be able to speak unless it's public comment, because that's not per Robert Rules of Order, but see, when you guys want people to speak, see, God forbid a woman stand up and say, I am proud to be a woman.
I am proud to be a woman.
Your, so then why, so then why are we taking away the term men and women? And why is it that I am not allowed to fight for that and say that?
Point of order, point of order.
You guys can all get, I know that the president had you all, and that Queenie told you all to come here to harass me, oh, was that not what the student government wasn't about? This is all to gang up on me for standing up for women.
Okay, Michelle, thank you. Trustee Harris.
Oh, the only thing I want to say is thank you very much for the appointment to the policy committee, I look forward to working with Karen Kissel and Queenie, trustee Queenie, and whoever else is there.
Is that it?
That is.
Thank you. So as we come to a close, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the contract extension approved this evening for Dr. Numul. The extension not only represents great faith in Dr. Numul's leadership, but also demonstrates our confidence in his continued success and the progress of Joliet Junior College under his guidance. We met with some community stakeholders that showed up tonight, Jen Howard, Mayor Darcy, we know that the key stakeholders of the community also support Dr. Numul. We have a couple open positions on the campus, one is the vice president of student development that we voted on tonight, also, we can, we continue as a college to attract some pretty incredible people that want to come work for this institution, so it's not as broke as some people would make you want to believe. So securing his commitment well in advance of the contract that expires June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five reflects a considerable trust Dr. Numul has built through this forward-thinking leadership and a strategic engagement with all sectors of the college district. His vision and ability to navigate challenges while seizing opportunities for growth have been key in positioning JJC for a bright future. We are excited to see where his leadership will take us in the years ahead. And that will conclude the chair report. At this time, chair request a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Voice vote, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.